So we're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:10. And I do not have an American flag in front of me. Colt, would you go ahead and just lead us in a pledge of allegiance? I think anybody leading us in a pledge would be appropriate. Can't hear you, Colt.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There you go. Right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
To republic.
Which is.
And. One nation. Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I appreciate everybody's flexibility and being able to meet via Zoom. As a process that I have learned in the past regarding the roll call of members, all I need is to see everybody's face one time. I have seen Ms. Woods, I have seen Ms. Melissa, Ms. Dominique and Mr. and Director Newby, if you would, just take the or allow me to see your camera. Looks like somebody's.
I'm driving right now, so you get the road.
Okay.
Get to the house.
Can you just turn the phone to your face just so everybody can acknowledge that you are the one driving?
Let's see. Can you see me?
Not yet.
I. Let's see.
Tell you what, when you get to a good spot, if you would, just so that we could acknowledge the fact that you are indeed present. And unless you're doing that right now. No, okay, and then Director Newby, if you would be so kind to do the same. Am I missing Director Newby? Director Newby, are you there, sir?
He emailed earlier that he was standing by. Do you wanna check the waiting room still?
Can we have our host do that, please?
It shows that he's in.
Okay, thanks, chief. I will text him. The last thing we want is not to acknowledge somebody. I'm gonna mute myself while I voice text Director Newby. All right. I have texted him. There we go, I see Ms. Dominique, thank you very much. Thanks for driving safe, too. And your camera's still on, Dominique.
I emailed him again, too, Greg.
Okay. Yeah, he hasn't responded to my text.
We really need him in the meeting because he's the one that sent out a draft with more changes.
Last thing I wanna do is not give everybody an opportunity to speak, and I think it's important that we do everything that we can to ensure that he is able to make the meeting. So I think, let me double check the agenda, we might be able to move forward with him. Let the record show that we have Director Davaney, Director Woods, Director Baker and myself online. And we are waiting for Director Newby, although we do see that he is logged in. All right.
Greg, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Yep, I was responding to your last statement, Dirk Woods. All right, while we move forward, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Additions or deletions to the agenda? Last time additions, deletions, and I'll throw in corrections to the agenda.
I have none.
Okay.
None.
All right. With that, I accept the motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right, approved by Director Davaney, seconded by Director Woods, I believe. Is that correct, Director Woods? Did I lose Director Woods?
No, I seconded the motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry, I did not hear you, Sharon, I wanna make sure everybody. And then, were the all in favor of the motion to accept the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Oh, and Kevin and Colt, I see you both, I acknowledge that as well. All right, we will move into the second or the next item.
Director Pixley. Would you like me to share the agenda so everybody can see it on the screen?
Would you please, because I'm going back and forth and back and forth.
I'd be happy to help.
I have not seen anything from Director Newby yet, hello, or however, I see that he is on and has been verified. Director Newby, as soon as you have the capability, if you would let us know you're on. All right, if everybody would please look at the pack or in the packet that was provided to us by Barb and reviewing the October meeting minutes from October 2023. And I'll give you just about a minute to look at that one last time. Are there additions, deletions, or corrections to the October pension board meeting minutes?
I have none.
Okay. Addition, subletions, or corrections, Sharon has none?
None.
None here.
Oh, thank you, Director Newby, thank you, I hope there has not been too much of an issue. So we are at the point of the fifth item on the agenda for the approval of the meeting minutes from October 2023, we just approved the agenda, if you were not aware of that. Okay.
That's good.
Thank you, accept the motion, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, thank you, I understand.
Perfect. And now I will accept a motion to approve the October 23 pension board meeting minutes.
So moved.
So moved.
All right, I heard Director Davaney and seconded by Director Woods, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Abstentions that motion carries. All right, we're gonna go into old business real quick, and we're going to address the pension bylaws as our first item under old business. The, the updated bylaws have been out there, thank you Director Woods for getting clarification on the latest and the greatest. First off, thank you Colt for maintaining the digest so that we can understand exactly what is taking place, and thank you to the subcommittee that has been working on the bylaws themselves. I appreciate both trustee Davaney and director Newby's efforts on this and everybody's involvement and all of their suggestions so that we can move forward with an updated and a consistent bylaws here as we move into 2024. With that in mind, can we open up the bylaws update to a discussion? Is there any discussion related to the pension bylaws that have been presented to us?
Are we talking about the most recent ones that came, I guess, today?
That's correct, the most recent. We want to ensure that we are going to possibly approve the bylaws that were presented to us, but I understand that there is an issue item regarding a late addition, and I want to ensure that we are okay, I want to ensure that we are approving the latest agenda item, and Colt, for the sake of everything, perhaps you could send that to Ms. Stroke, and then she can post that so that we all can verify that we are talking about the exact document.
Yeah, give me just a second, I'll, I'll get it sent over to her.
All right, Sharon, is that okay? Sharon Troke?
She nodded.
I see your cursor moving.
I think she nodded.
Okay.
I have a question, are we allowed to ask questions?
Oh, yes, by all means, this is open discussion surrounding the pension bylaws.
Yeah, I just have some questions, but I can wait.
No, please, ask a question.
Well, my first question has to do with definitions, surviving spouse. I guess I wanna understand why, if the surviving spouse remarries, he or she cannot continue to collect the pension from her, just her or his deceased spouse. I just wanna understand the logic to that, cuz I don't think that makes sense to me from a financial standpoint.
Yes, my belief would be very, it would be very similar to the social security approach. And go ahead, Dominique.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct, Greg, it's part of just government pension standard and social security standard. Once that surviving spouse retires or remarries, they are no longer considered a dependent or dependent upon their prior spouse's income or death benefits.
I'm gonna make sure I don't kill off my husband.
Yeah, really, I mean, unless.
If I have somebody waiting.
Unless you got something else in line.
Well, I think that's a very good question, and I for one have the social security issue that I am dealing with, so that is something that is federal law. And I, and I'm assuming that, as Director Davaney mentioned, that that is the process that they are implementing as well. The likelihood is that they might be able to find another income stream or increase their financial stability with a new relationship. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have more questions, so.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, I'm so sorry.
Okay, that's okay, Article three, organize. I mean, total. It goes on to discuss, there's a president, a vice president, a secretary, a treasurer. But I didn't see anywhere where it says how many individuals and/or, I don't know, stand-ins, helpers, whatever, are on the board. So that's my question, maybe I missed it.
Okay, so you're looking for clarification as to the number of board members that will be eligible to participate on the pension board, is that correct?
That's correct, I didn't see anywhere.
So it doesn't specifically say a number. What it is, it's the Board of Directors of the Fire Protection District for your guys' terms that you're elected to. And then, so it's actually, and then and then two trustees are elected. So it doesn't actually say seven, it kinda breaks it out in more words than that. I mean, we could change that to make it a little easier.
I would like it to be spelled out, how many actual people are on the board, Colt, just because I think it could become confusing for someone who's reading this for the first time, like me.
Yeah.
First time, but, you know, the second time or whatever.
So that Sharon is also dictated by Title 31 statute. So it's the Board of Directors plus two elected member, two re- regular members, appointed elected members. Because there can be boards that are seven-person boards or boards that are five-person boards.
Okay, so I, I understand what you're saying, Dominique, but I, I still think somewhere in the bylaws, we ought to say how many board members are going to be on this board, is it gonna be seven or five, cuz you do have a choice, so how many are we gonna have on this board?
So, so Director Woods, so I, I agree. And Colt, you're, you're certain that it does not specify that the board members are trustees and then two additional?
Um, so, wait just a sec to get back to it.
I mean.
Yeah.
I know what you're saying, I, I, Director Newby, I know what you're saying.
So it just says the Board of Directors of the Fire Protection District for terms equal to their tenure on the Fire Protection Board. And then on or after August 15th of 2010, two individuals elected from one or more of the following groups, which includes the Fire Department members retired and retired active members.
Yes, that, so that's, that's number three, is it?
It's Article three.
Article three, but also numeral three, right? Arabic numeral three.
Yes. So it's Article three, section one and section three.
Okay. Got it.
So it's, but I, I, I agree with Director Woods, it could be a little clearer. So I guess I would ask the board if we want to create clarifying language either tonight or subsequently. I would, I would certainly be for that if, if the rest of the board feels that it's it will be helpful going forward.
Does this lock us in? I mean, is this kind of referencing what the Board of Directors and their numbers? I mean, if we, if we list this in the pension bylaws, does this mean that if the bylaws for the board change, that then the pension bylaws also have to change? Just from a logistic standpoint?
I think that would be correct, Director Baker, yes. So if we specify.
Capacity?
Go ahead.
Like what would change on the board that would change the bylaws?
So if, for instance, and not that this happened by any means or we're headed in that direction, but if, for instance, consolidation or anything in the future changes, does this basically direct people to the bylaws for the board for how many members are on that board, rather than stating a specific number so that you don't have to change it in two places, you only have to change it in one?
Right, I, I agree with what you just said.
Yes, I, I, I agree with that. So, so we could certainly make that change.
It would divest back to the structure of the Board of Directors for the organization.
As it's now, correct?
As it stands, period, the, that's it. The way that this board is constructed as the pension is a state statute con- construction. So it is, it is state statute, the Board of Directors of the Fire Department plus two additional members. So whether it's five or seven or whatever it is, it, it defers to the, the Board of Directors of the main organization plus two trustee mem- or elected trustees.
And that would be my preference, just so that we don't have to go through updating two sets of bylaws.
Agreed.
I agree, I would be in support of clarifying language at a later time, I don't wanna get into it tonight.
Okay, but if we're gonna do that, Dominique, shouldn't we just go ahead and, and try to get something in that we could get over to Camille and get these bylaws accepted in a, in a short term?
We can accept them, in my opinion, as they stand. Because the language has already been vetted by Camille, and it's in line with Title 31 standard. If, after we've passed them, we wanna make adjustments and changes, we can do that on a piece-by-piece amendment basis, not an entire sub- an entire change, which makes it a more living, organic document. I would rather, you know, come up with the right language that everybody's comfortable with at a later time than try to hash it out now against a product that we've already said, you know, we posted 10 days ago. I really don't like the idea of making any sort of substantive change to this.
I think in principle, I would agree with what you're saying. We would be able to accommodate any changes in the future, but we would be able to have them vetted. But we could get the gist of this, these bylaws approved so that we could move forward on the substance of those approved bylaws here in the future, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah.
Okay. Do my fellow directors have any question or concerns about moving forward with the intent of addressing the structure and numeric representation of the board at a, in the near future, here in the month or so?
So if what I'm hearing correctly is that we're gonna approve them as they stand that we received today, there's apparently one particular issue that I think was added that I don't think I agree with.
Okay, can we, if you're comfortable in moving forward, Director Woods, we could move to that next topic, unless, let me do this. Let it, let's table the discussion to ensure that everybody's comfortable with us moving forward with the intent of addressing the numeric representation of the board in the near future, is there any issue with us doing that?
I don't have an issue with that.
I'm, I'm okay with that, Greg.
Okay.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, perfect, then let's move to your next top, was there somebody else?
Yes, Greg, let me, let me say that the, the copy, I think that we have, that Sharon has up on the screen here is not the correct copy.
Yeah, I just sent her the correct copy that you sent over this morning.
Sharon, could you put up that copy that Colt just sent you?
That's what this is, he emailed it to me and I opened it up right up.
Um, so I just sent you another one like three seconds ago.
Okay.
It should be sent from this morning.
Yeah, the top should be bolded, I can tell that the top should be bolded. And go ahead and turn on changes so that we can see the notes and everything.
My apologies, I had quite a few different versions of it, so.
No worries, no worries.
I think we all do.
Yes, we do.
Director Pixley? Yes, sir. And Board of Directors, if we're gonna move forward with this, do we not have to move forward with the one that was presented 10 days ago? If we change it, it's now a whole nother situation.
Yeah, I agree.
Legally, we have to approve what was posted 10 days ago. We can always make an amendment and change whatever, whatever you want down the road.
And I, we are intending to do with the timing.
I think we're bringing up the other version so that we can highlight what the issue of discussion is, Kevin?
Well, except that, and, and based on what Kevin just said, the one that we received this morning is not the one we're voting on. The one we're voting on is the one that was posted 10 days ago. The one that was posted 10 days ago does not have this additional comment.
To clarify, the one that was posted this morning cannot be voted on because we need the notice.
Well, alternatively, we can vote on, we, we can post this tonight as, after we argue out all of the issues here, and then vote on it 10 days hence.
And might it be more efficient for us to add the language surrounding the numeric representation in addition to this, this most current change? So that we can have, as opposed to kind of piecemealing this, we can have it done in one lump sum here in the near future?
Yeah, um, you know, I spent a good chunk of time looking at the changes and tracking the changes that Chuck made on the document he submitted today. Fundamentally, the majority of his changes are editorial, which are, are non-issue. Changing the bolding, changing the font, fixing typos, those are foundation, those are, those are editorial changes that don't need to be voted on. The only significant difference is the issue over set Article nine, item E. And that was foundationally changed from the document that Colt put out prior and which was also missing the actual language that was discussed at the board meeting.
Correct.
So I.
Ms. Troke, can you add that, can you go to that page, please?
Yes, please go to that page.
Which page is it?
So scroll down, it's Article nine.
Page 11.
Thank you.
So it's gonna be Article nine, section E. So that one there.
There you go.
Section D. Now, we discussed this at the last meeting.
Is there a way to make that larger so we can read it?
Okay, and I just wanna clarify to everybody that this is for discussion only. This will not be relative to the, a potential motion to approve the the bylaws as presented 10 days ago, so that we have the capability of moving forward with an updated document. And then can we have the author express the intent surrounding item E as an Edward?
Yeah, so, so the intent here is to make sure that it's part of our duties to communicate out to the pension plan members a record of their individualized benefits. So the, the language here is broad enough so that basically it puts a duty on the, on the pension board to make sure that the, that communication is done. So if we wanna, the, and, and so that's the intent. We had a lot of complaints about the fact that pension recipients did not, had, had no communication, no awareness of where their pension plan benefits now and in the future, how they were represented, no communication, so this is the intent to.
That's not true, you get quarterly statements from the state, the state takes care of all that.
Yeah. Okay, and correct me, gentlemen, if I'm wrong, we had discussed providing a landing or a link to the landing page for FPPA on the Elk Creek website that would give these individuals an opportunity to log into their, their personal accounts, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, so the idea here, though, board members, is that that, this puts the, keeps the burden on us to make sure that that is actually implemented and maintained going forward. So there's nothing in this language that specifies you, other than the intent of the communication. The, the mechanics and the particulars are up to us, but the, but this language places the duty on us to maintain that. So that's.
And, and Director Newby, I appreciate the intent, I think that there are some specifics that are listed in item E that are a little too, are, they're not broad enough because this says that we have to define this, the summary for each individualized members. When that was not my understanding, my understanding is we were going to provide them access to the FPPA website so that they could log in with their individual uh, account, uh, their portal so that they could act, reference their own, um, uh, benefits.
So do we want to, so are you arguing that we should put that exact language, replace this language with that language?
Something in the, in mind, uh, and I
That's fine, that, that's fine with me. I just want to make sure that it's in the bylaws explicitly. That it's not, it's not left out.
I respect that, and I think by and large, uh, the others, oh, go ahead, Ms. Devaney.
The language that was agreed upon at the last pension board meeting states specifically shall facilitate communications and access to all eligible members of the pension. That is what we all agreed to when we reviewed these the last time, and that's the language that I will support. I will not support anything that says individualized statements. I do not want to put the board in the position of having access to those, nor do I want to put an obligation on the staff to do that either. That is the financial and integral responsibility of the FPPA, not the individual.
Correct. And if I heard Director Newby, I think he was in agreement, uh, uh, correct, sir, that you were in agreement?
Yes, yeah. So, so that, that language is, is, um, that Director Devaney just cited is, is very much acceptable to me.
All right, so again, we will
I'm sorry, uh, just to tie it off, ju- just as long as we have agreement to actually put it in the, uh, the bylaws, uh, under this section.
Uh, and, uh, Director Baker, if we could just add note that we're going to table this discussion with the intent of adding this in the near future as we are going to do with our last topic. All right, let's move to the next item of, um, can, a question or concern or clarification? Director Woods, do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Director Devaney?
I don't.
Director Newby?
Uh, no, I'm good as long as we, uh, get to those, uh, editorial, uh, comments and, and corrections.
I would believe that it would be appropriate, uh, um, for all of us to address those concerns with, or those issues at our next meeting in, um, our, our next quarterly meeting. And then, um, go, go ahead, Dominique.
I think everybody is substantively okay with the version that came out from Colt. In, and I am fine including the grammatical and editorial changes that Director Newby made as far as lining font up and bolding and correcting all of that. I'm fine with that and would motion to accept the bylaws as presented on, by Colt Steele on January 3rd with appropriate non-substantive editorial changes.
Uh, I, I heard a motion. I would ask that the motion maker rescind the motion under this principle. Is that when we start adding, um, portions and pieces of separate versions, it becomes convoluted. And I would appreciate the board if they were all respectful of the fact that we should look at specifically the presented bylaws by Colt 10 days ago. We have already agreed in principle that we are going to address two other items. While we address those two items, I would entertain, uh, or I would, um, truly support Director Newby's efforts in providing the grammatical corrections, but I don't feel it's appropriate for us to piece parts of it until we all have the final version.
That's fine. I rescind my motion and move that we accept the bylaws as presented by, uh, Trustee Steele on January 3rd.
I have, I have a motion to approve the bylaws. Is there a second?
A second type motion.
Uh, Director Woods seconded, uh, discussion on the motion. Want to make sure Colt, as the, um, the large effort was placed on you, would you discuss, have any other things you would like to discuss surrounding the bylaws presented 10 day, 10 days ago?
Um, but just based kind of on this whole discussion, I think it's a great idea to let's, um, vote on and get the, uh, bylaws that presented by myself, um, on January 3rd solidified because then we can make amendments later down the road to include all, um, the things that Director Newby had sent over, um, because I can work on making sure that gets in, we can check with the lawyer. Um, as long as those are amendments that we agree on down the road, um, I have no problem with accepting the motion for, uh, the version that I sent on January 3rd.
Okay, I hear, uh, Director Steele, uh, voicing approval of the, uh, motion. Any other discussion on the motion? Any other discussion on the motion?
I'll just have
Go ahead, Director Woods.
There's actually additional typos in here that I will send to Colt, um,
Okay, uh, uh, that's clearly appropriate. We will address changes regarding grammatical and, and typographical errors in the future. Uh, the motion is to approve the bylaws presented on January 3rd.
Now I seconded that motion.
Yes, you did. You want to speak in favor of it?
Um, yes, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, perfect. And then, uh, finally, any other discussion on a motion? Hearing none. Uh, the motion was made by Director Devaney that we approve the January 3rd presentation of the pension bylaws or, uh, of the pension bylaws. It was seconded by Director Woods. Discussion has been had on the motion. All in favor?
Mine.
I.
Against? Abstentions that motion carries? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda. Ooh, Sharon, I saw it for a second.
Nope, I don't have any else.
No other Sharon, Sharon?
Oh, sorry, Sharon.
Sorry, looking for the agenda, hold on.
Not yet. You was there for just a second. Okay, I believe that we are going to address the actuaries. Yeah, the, uh, next item on the agenda is the additional actuaries. Uh, let's open that up for discussion, the conversation surrounding the additional actuaries.
Okay, I got something.
Yes, sir.
Um, the actuaries, actuarial report, if we choose to do it this year, is going to be way more than we approved. Uh, money-wise, Colt and I were talking about it. We think, um, we should just do the $1,400, ask them for 10%. Uh, how much, uh, you know, the actuaries for, y- use the actu, I'm saying this backwards. If we use the actuarial from 2022, uh, we were funded, we have enough in there. If we ask them to, uh, basically give us, uh, how much it would cost us for a 10% raise, pay them $1,400. That's the cheapest way out because if we pay $7,000 to get the new actuarial, we're not going to have the money in there to give anybody a raise. Does that make sense?
I, I appreciate your frugality there, or your frugal approach for sure. Um, can we address this with the treasurer, Ms., Ms. Woods? Would, uh, do you like to discuss this any further?
I don't think I'm totally understanding what you said.
Did you get that thing from Barbara that showed the monies, uh, what it would cost to do an actuarial report? And if you do and you want 5%, 10% or 15% raise, each one is $1,400 for them to check.
Okay, now I know what you're talking about. Sorry, my, um, my mistake. So we can spend, we can do an off-cycle actuarial and spend $6,500, right?
No, if they do another actuarial report, it's going to be $7,000. So we can use the old report.
So what it was is off-cycle is 6,500, or like, I think it was 6,100 plus the additional 1,400
Correct.
To add if we can possibly do a 10% raise, bringing it up to the 7,500. If you use the actuarial study that we received last year based on the 2022 numbers, we can submit those, using that data, we only pay the 1,400 to see if we can provide a 10% raise.
Okay, so
Just to throw this in there, if I'm understanding correctly, in 2023, we had a drop of 12 members or somewhere in that range. So the number that we're talking about using the actuarial from January 1 of 2023, it would mean that it's a fairly conservative because there's actually more money because we lost some members in the plan, correct?
That's how I understand it.
Correct.
And keep in mind, even if we waited till 2025 and did an action and, and got a free actuarial study, it's still going to cost us 1,400 bucks or maybe more next year to actually try to get a raise again.
Hey, Kev, can you remind me when that actuarial was completed last year? What month?
Uh, we didn't get it till September.
Okay, so it's timely.
I know.
Is my
Yeah, Barbara said, the gal she spoke with at the, uh, the state, if we were to request an actuarial, whether it be this year or next year, it does come a lot quicker since we're paying for it. Go figure, that's how the state works.
So you're suggesting it to, go ahead, go ahead.
When is our next actuarial report going to be done?
2025 and we won't see it till September at least.
Okay.
So we had one done in 2023, correct?
I'm sorry, am I saying that backwards?
Well, because they're two years, correct? They do them every two years.
It's every two years.
Right, so
And we had it and we got it last year.
So 2023. Got one in 2023.
Yeah.
And that's when the extra members were in there?
Yes.
Okay, so since that had extra members in it, wouldn't it be more conservative to use the 2023? I'm missing something.
That's, that's what we were saying. I, Colt mentioned 22. I thought it was this year we got it, correct?
So it's data from 2022 that we received in 2023.
Yeah, because, because they're always a year behind, which drives me nuts as an accountant that we're a whole year behind. Um, so 2023 actuarial was based on 2022 data.
Correct.
As of January 1st, 2022. So include the whole year of 2022?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll start running until January 1st.
Right. So when they run it on January 1st of 2023, for example, they don't have 2023 data yet.
No.
Okay, so it's really 2022 data.
Correct.
But it's the actuarial for 20 that we receive in 23.
Based on the pension, based on the people that are eligible in the pension or could be eligible in the pension at that time, correct?
Yes.
We have a unique situation because no new members have been added to it since 2018.
Right.
We know exactly how many and we know when they drop off and there's still X amount of dollars.
So, so what is the benefit of doing an off-cycle actuarial? Because I know Dominic, that's
We're not, that's what we're not, we're saying not to do because that's going to cost us $6,500.
The benefit, Sharon, would be we would have more up-to-date numbers on the members that are actually in the, that are eligible for the pension. Would be the only benefit. It would, it's essentially just getting more current data.
Of the number of members, not current data in terms of what's out there.
It would be based off of investments and growth of the account, but I don't think that offsets enough to warrant a $6,500 expense.
Wow, 6,500 plus 1,400, so.
Yeah, when I made that original motion, it was based off of the, um, belief that the, a secondary actuarial was only going to run as about two grand when Pam was sitting there with us. Um, knowing now that it's 6,500, I, I don't support that at all. I think it's fine to run a $1,400, 10% review and go from there.
Well, and thank you for saying that because I agree with you. I was trying to get back to the original idea and that was to do an off-cycle one. So I agree with you, Dominic. Spending over $7,000 to do an off-cycle actuarial doesn't make sense to me. I don't think we have, I don't think the data would be that much different versus waiting. That's me.
We're not, we're not waiting till 2025, September to get the data. We want to see now if we can actually give our people 10%.
So are we motioning to look into the $1,400 at a 10%?
That's where I think we're going with this conversation.
Right, so we don't want to spend the whole, we don't want to spend the 6,500 or we want to spend the 1,400.
Yes, which you're going to spend anyway, next year, the year after, the year after, and it's probably going to go up anytime you want to give your people a raise. Ideally, we want to know how much we have because if people are dropping out of the plan and there's a lot more money where we technically could give them 15%, we want to know that, but we can't know that until we get 2025's data. And there might be another person or two who drops off the plan.
So are we motioning to do the $1,400 versus nothing? Is that what we're motioning?
I would like to make a motion to spend $1,400 to, uh, see if we can get our retirees a 10% raise.
Okay, before we hear that motion, I want to make sure parliamentarily that we don't have to rescind the other motion first. Um, it, it gets convoluted in Robert's rules. We have an existing motion that says we're going to move forward, correct?
Yeah, but we can't because we already, it was only $3,000 and we exceeded that, so. If we were to do the full activity, that, that motion was for an actuarial report, which we're not doing. Because that was $6,500. So that motion, we can't even do it because it exceeded the $3,000.
Dom, help me out here because we have a motion that was set up to $3,000. It ends up being more than
Yeah, um, what it basically does is it kills that motion. I move to have an actual actuarial report done, not to exceed $3,000. The findings are that, um, we can't get an actual, oh, blah, we can't get an actuarial report for less than $3,000, so it kills the activity. So we don't have to kill it. We just have to make note that, um, Melissa just has to note in the minutes that we were severely under budget, ergo, a new motion is on the table.
Okay. Um, is there any issues with that? Because to rescind a motion, uh, it, it's really difficult. We should have done it earlier. Uh, anyway, I don't want to get into the specifics, but is there an issue with any board member for us to move forward with the same intent with a different motion? Is there any issue with any board member of us moving in the same direction but with a different motion?
No, I have no issue because I don't think it is an issue. We weren't able to.
Understood. Um, uh, Trustee Devaney, if you would, re- restate your emotion.
I would like to make a motion that we spend the $1,400 to have this state look into, uh, what it's going to cost us um, to give our people a 10% raise.
And I'll second that.
Okay, second by Colt. Any other discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion?
Should we make that motion, Kevin, to spend up to a certain amount?
I, I'm not sure if it's 1468 or something. It's right around $1,400 according to Barbara. She was only talking to the gal the first time about the actuarial study and what it costs to have it done. So that's the number that she got thrown. It's around $1,400.
That we spend, that we make
So why don't you restate to up to $2,000?
I would agree.
Yeah. Okay, I will restate up to $2,000 to look into getting our people a 10% raise.
Colt, are you seconding?
I will second that.
Got it. Um, any other discussion on the motion?
No.
Discussion on the motion? Last time, discussion on the motion. All right, call the question. Um, can you reread that back to us, Melissa, what you have?
Pardon me. Um. Pardon me, um. Trustee Devaney made a motion to spend up to $2,000 to have the state look into what it's going to cost us to give our retirees a 10% raise, seconded by trustee Thiel.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? All right, that motion carries. That takes us to new business, third quarter 2023, um, allocation report. Any questions or comments surrounding the allocation report? I think we're all pretty familiar with where we're at regarding the, um, financial reports that have been provided to us as of late. Any comments or questions? All right, last time, any comments or questions? Okay, then, I, um. We will approve the 2023 third quarter allocation report as presented.
Do we need a, for that?
Need a motion?
Uh, I don't think we need a motion for that, but, uh, I think just if we want to, uh, I'll accept a motion to approve the third quarter 2023 allocation report.
So moved.
I didn't hear the second, I'm sorry.
Um, second.
Oh, second by Colt. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
And abstentions? All right, that motion passes, and then last item on the new business is a call for nominations. We are trying to get back in the right. Timeframe for our trustee positions and, um, those. Will, will have to call for nominations. We're making a formal announcement that we're calling for nominations for the pension board trustees. Those two members that occupy the firefighter positions on the board. And we'll make this a formal nomination. Nominations will be heard at our next regular meeting. And then those nominations will move forward in the election process. But, uh, this is a formal notification for, uh, the public and for those in attendance today. That we will be calling for nominations for our trustees' position for the Oak Creek Fire Protection Pension Board of Trustees.
Hey Pix, we were, Colt and I were talking about trying to get somebody installed on the April meeting, which is our next meeting. So if we call for nominations now, leave them open for, what was it, 45 days or something, Colt?
Um, so I kind of wanted to discuss this with the board. So my thought is we call for nominations to be closed, um, at the end of January. That gives Barb enough time to get the names kind of on a ballots that we can then send out to all the eligible voting members. Um, to vote in, in March. We receive those ballots by us, by the end of March. That gives her time to, um, go through the ballots. And, um, um, the April meeting, we can then present who was elected.
Yeah. Okay, um, I thought we needed 30 days announcement. Help me with that, please, on the nomination.
Not anymore, not with the new bylaws.
Okay. Okay, um.
I would extend time, Colt. I know that Barbara's going to be out of town.
Um, that was just something I was thinking of. Um, I wasn't really set on times. That's why I wanted to discuss it with the board.
Yeah, I would say leave it open till like February 15th or something.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Any other, uh, actually?
Yeah, February the 15th seems, seems reasonable to me, so I, I would support that.
Okay, Colt, why don't you, uh, go ahead and make a motion that, uh, gives. Us the backing to move forward this direction.
So I make a motion that we. Have an official call for nominations for the two trustee positions to be open until February 15th.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Go ahead.
My apologies, clarification, is it two or just one? I thought only one of you was up.
So, I, I think they're both up, aren't they, Colt? Are you going to stagger it?
Based on, um. How things kind of got messed up in the past. We want to get back on track. So there's going to be one trustee position open. For, for a two-year term. The other trustee position will be open for a one-year term. This gets us back on track, um, so we meet the bylaws.
Right. Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Okay, uh, my question to the motion maker would be, how do we, uh, point of information, how do we clarify who is being nominated for what term?
Thank you, um, I was going to bring that up as well, um. Kind of want to open this up for discussion, um, but, so my thought process is, we take the, um. Essentially, we tally the votes. The person with the highest count would be a two-year term, the second, and the person with the second most would be for the one-year term.
Okay, with that in mind, since we haven't had a second, I would ask that you rescind your motion, and let's clarify that specifically in the motion, so we have direction on how to move forward.
So I, I make the motion, um, for an official call for nominations for the two trustee members. Um, the highest votes being for a two-year term. Person with the second highest votes being for a one-year term, and nominations to be open until February 15th.
Nomination by, um, trustee Thiel, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Any other discussion on the motion?
I just have a question.
Quick clarification.
How, clarification, that, that's good. I have a clarification. So how do we put this out to get these nominations? Does it go out on a website or? Emails, or how do you do it?
Has, it would have to be on the website, I think.
And there should be.
And keep in mind, the only people eligible to vote are the members and the retirees.
Right.
We were going to contact the retirees via snail mail to make sure we have their current emails, and then we can then do everything through, uh, electronic email. Um, they can ask questions, they can vote, um, and. The membership will meet at whatever meeting, according to Captain Shine. He can make a meeting of the membership right before April, and we can. The, the membership can vote at that point.
But you, but we're also going to put it on the website too, right, for estimation purposes?
Well, for the retirees, yes.
Yes.
For open-up nominees, yes.
It'll be on the website though, so everybody can see it.
Yes, correct. Uh, but again, only, you, you got a captured audience here. The only people who can run, and the only people who can vote. Are the people that we listed in our new bylaws here.
Right.
And we'll notify them, uh, or we'll make sure that is readily apparent on the website.
Correct.
Okay, further discussion on the motion. Last time, discussion on the motion. Ms. Melissa, if you would be so kind as to read the motion again?
Oh geez, I put notes to put it all together. Um, okay, so. Uh, trustee Thiel made a motion, um. To, uh, have a call for nominations to be open to February 15th. The person who receives the most votes would get the two-year term, and the person who receives less than the. First person would receive the, uh, one-year term. I know that's not super official, but I'll put it together better.
Okay, there's, yeah, the second most vote getter will be the one-year term, is what Thiel said.
Okay.
Okay, um. The motion's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, against and abstentions? That motion carries. Any other business to be brought before the board? Any other business to be brought before the pension board of trustees? Last time, hearing none. Go ahead.
I call the question. I move that we adjourn.
All right, uh, her motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any against? None, uh, the, thank you all very much. I appreciate your time. Uh, uh, the meeting is adjourned at 7:09 PM. Thank you very much.
Greg, have a good night, everybody.